World of Regulation. So thanks for moving this and providing the opportunity, at least for the experience. I'm sure those who participate will be very excited.
Certainly, a moving target it has been. So, thank you.
And we'll keep moving, I'm sure, as we get the new regs next week. So, all right. The month enrollment report is there. If anybody has any questions?
The enrollment has increased from 4,416 to 4,449, an increase of 33 students since the beginning of the school year.
Chuckell's kindergarten enrollment for next year looking?
I think it's lower than usual, and I think folks are waiting to see what's going to happen. So, we, we hope if we get things figured, when we get things figured out here, that we'll see an increase in the enrollment.
That makes sense. Thank you.
That'll be a real interesting one, right? Because as we progress, how comfortable people are with enrolling kindergarteners. So, we'll see. All right. Policies are there for second reading and adoption for next week, and then also policies for repeal reading. Any questions on those? We went over them in our previous meetings on the first reading, so we'll dive into any details. Somebody had any specific questions? All right. Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Prior to our special board meeting for the budget approval and the appointment of the superintendent, we did share an announcement, and I would just like to take a moment to repeat that prior to going into our superintendent's update. Earlier today, a communication was sent to our Great Valley community related to the national events in response to the death of George Floyd. Please know that we are committed to ensuring our school community is inclusive and welcoming. Resources were provided within that communication, and our staff is available to provide additional resources. The support is available by contacting the building administrator, social worker, and/or guidance counselor. The Council for Diversity and Inclusion, as was mentioned in that communication, is comprised of multiple stakeholders, including central office and building administrators, students, school board members, teachers, counselors, parents, guardians, and community representatives. The commission and mission of the Council for Diversity and Inclusion is to support the district in ensuring belonging in our schools, as well as educational equity and access. That group, our council, will be meeting again this week to look at the year in review and set the targets for moving forward. The council has been very active, and it was very much a proactive response to ensuring equity and inclusion, and most especially with the events of this past week. I'm very thankful that we have this meeting planned and provide the opportunity for voices to be heard and the plan to continue. Superintendent's update for June 1st of 2020. And this is one of the highlights of the month. As you can see by the slide for our virtual Reading Olympics, on May 20th, Great Valley Elementary Schools participated in Virtual Reading Olympics. The competition consisted of three rounds with 12 teams and culminated in a live virtual celebration ceremony. Thank you so much to our librarians who made this event happen, even in our remote world, and to the students who participated. For what I had heard, the feedback I have received, this was a highlight for many of our students. Next, the National Latin Exam, known as NLE, is a challenging test that is administered annually to Latin students around the world. The NLE is an opportunity for students to receive reinforcement and recognition for their accomplishments in the Latin classroom. Depending on their score, students can earn certificates, medals, and may even qualify for scholarships at the high school level. In March of 2020, the NLE was offered for the first time at Great Valley Middle School to select Latin I and Introduction to Latin students. Great Valley Middle School students performed impressively, with a number of students earning national recognition. For the Introduction to Latin exam, Camille Derval, Pranay Fatakonda, Bella Acker, and Nishtha Gupta all received Certificates of Achievement. For the Latin I exam, Dante Stefaneli and Ria Nagaluri earned cum laude honors, while Grant Bardsley and Dane Teeter earned magna cum laude honors. Congratulations to our students. Next, we had a student who was named Saludatorian. Great Valley High School senior Erin Wilkins, who attends the Health Career Pathways CTE Program at the Technical College High School Pickering Campus. Erin has earned the title of Saludatorian for that campus. She has been accepted to Harkam College, Ursinus College, and Montgomery County Community College. Erin would like to study to become a pharmacy technician post-graduation. She is involved in Skills USA, HOSA, a member of the National Honor Society, and National Technical Honor Society, as well as an avid horseback rider. Mrs. Clarkoska, her CTE instructor noted that Erin served as the student member of the Health Career Pathways OAC, was an officer for Penn HOSA, and the TCHS Pickering Local Chapter. Erin is always willing to do extra activities. Erin has been instrumental in organizing and maintaining our lab and setting up the technology for student use and tours. Congratulations, and thank you, Erin, for all of your hard work. Next, the Stock Market Challenge. Congratulations to Great Valley High School for ranking first in the statewide high school division and top 10 in the statewide all divisions Spring 2020 Competition of the Pennsylvania Council on Financial Literacy's Stock Market Challenge. The winning student for both was Jack Staff, under the guidance of teacher Kurt Balderson. Teams of students each managed a hypothetical investment of $100,000 in stocks, bonds, and mutual funds, and made buying and trading decisions based on the stock market. The students who traded and finished the competition with the most money won. Congratulations, Jack, and thank you, Mr. Balderson, for your guidance and leadership. Great job. On May 20th, we experienced and celebrated Cap and Gown Delivery Day. All of our graduating seniors received a visit, complete with graduation goodies. A special thanks to the Great Valley School District Education Foundation, who partnered with the school district to purchase flags for all of our seniors. As you recall, the Great Valley School District Education Foundation and the Great Valley School Board partnered for a feasibility study and a proposal with the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials a little over a year ago. And the outcome of that work has been incredible, and our partnership between the Education Foundation and the school district has really grown. The other area that the Education Foundation is promoting and working very hard with is our Good Neighbors Fund, the Good Neighbors Fund of the foundation, and much more information will be shared. I have to give a great shout out to the foundation for making that Good Neighbor Fund continue to happen, even in the challenging virtual worlds that we all find ourselves. So, not only with the purchase of flags for our seniors, but also with the ongoing partnerships to help our community, most especially our students and staff.
Regina, this is Amy. Thank you so much for that acknowledgement for the foundation. I'll make sure I pass it along.
Oh, thank you so much, Amy, and thank you for your representation on both boards. Incredibly helpful to have that conduit and keeping the relationship strong.
It's a pleasure.
Our next highlight, our high school girls' basketball team. The girls' basketball team at Great Valley High School earned the Chessmont American Champions Title and was a PIAA District One finalist. Also, the team's coach, Mr. Alex Van Archik, has been named the Daily Local Girls High School Basketball Coach of the Year. Incredibly well-deserved honor for the girls, the team, and Mr. Van Archik. Next, over 100 awards and scholarships were presented to our seniors this year. Every night between May 11th and May 22nd, groups of winners were announced on our website through a video series grouped in subject areas. If you would like to see the award videos, they can be found at our Great Valley website, Again, all those award videos can be seen on that site. And speaking with the students, it was so wonderful to hear how much they appreciated all of the work that was done in putting those awards together. A great thank you to the high school staff and all the, the award providers. It was truly remarkable to watch the award ceremony and have an opportunity to celebrate our, our very deserving students.
Regina, is there a place? I, I saw the videos online, and to see who the winners are, my understanding is you needed to watch each video. Is there a place where it's all listed now that it's finished, where you can see who won every award sort of in, in one glance?
I know that the flyer was always available for the live event, so I will certainly make sure that that's provided on the site as well, so if folks would like to read the award recipients.
Terrific, because that way we can recognize, you know, we may not have all seen every one of those presentations, and I'm sure a lot of people would, would love to know so they can recognize and congratulate those students and families.
Oh, thank you. Excellent idea. Thank you so much. And then, as we continue our recognitions, a special thank you. On May 28th, we virtually honored our employees who celebrated benchmark years of service. Thank you to these employees who celebrated 25, 30, and 35 years in the Great Valley School District during the 2019-2020 school year. And as you recall, in a live world, we would honor the, the employees, as well as the retirees, at a board meeting. So, in light of the fact that our board meetings were virtual, I'm very thankful to all who participated, taking the lead, Dr. Gufredo and Ms. Jennifer Blake, in ensuring that even though we could not be live and meeting in person, that it was a memorable and very honorable, heartwarming honoring for our special celebrations of years, as well as our retirees, which, on our next slide, congratulations to our retirees who are listed there, the 13 employees who retire at the end of this school year. The video celebration is available on the website, www.gvsd.org/tribute. And as we're talking about these tributes and these honors, all of the awards and all of the honors that have been extended, a thank you to Mr. Kevin Fitzpatrick, who has done an amazing job. He's working tirelessly on making sure that we're capturing special moments, not only for our students, most especially our graduates, as he's working on the graduation, but also with our staff members and our award recipients. Moving on, online registration is open. Who can register? Our incoming kindergarteners, students new to the area, and students that are looking to join Great Valley. They may be new to public school. So, we are welcoming new registrations for the 2020-2021 school year. If you are a Great Valley family who will have a student new to the district next year, we truly look forward to welcoming you. Please visit our website for more information and for the online registration link. Our pickup location, this is for food distribution, the location has changed. Beginning Friday, May 15th, all food pickup was at the middle school. So, that change is, has been in place for approximately two weeks, and the information is provided on our website. The pickups are Tuesday and Friday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Participation is free, and no registration is required. To date, we have provided more than 15,000 meals to families in Great Valley who are need of, who are in need of support at this time. If anyone is watching who knows of a family who may not be aware of this opportunity, please make sure you extend the invitation to them as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is Dave. So, school year is winding down, right? What is the plan for this? Does it also wind down at the end of the school year? Does it continue into the summer? Just so people are aware.
Thank you so much, Mr. Barrett. This program, and a huge shout out to Nicole Melia, our supervisor of food service, who anticipated, it was incredibly proactive in reaching out to the state to allow, and federal programming, to replicate the summer food program, which is part of an allowance for our students who may be in need in the summer. So, it is my understanding that this program will continue as a summer food opportunity, and if there are any adjustments being made as far as location, et cetera, those will be shared prior to the end of the school year. But summer food programming is also available.
Dr. Speaker Palavanti, this is Rachel. Can you quickly talk about how people can donate? I believe it's only a monetary donation at this time, but I know of at least one family who has taken to using this as a way to, to give back to the community. So, I imagine there are others that have similar sentiments.
Yes, and as we mentioned, our goal is to streamline, because of the nature of the way the food distribution program works, and it's under the guidelines of the federal government, there are certain allowances that can and cannot be, be implemented as far as donations. So, there is an opportunity for folks to provide support. As I had mentioned a little earlier, with the Great Valley School District Education Foundation and the establishment of the Good Neighbor Fund, what we're looking to do is provide, to direct any types of donations or support through that Good Neighbor Fund, and that, that would allow the Education Foundation to work directly with any of the programs provided with the school to allow maximum benefit to get to students and families in need in a very seamless, regulated, regulatory manner. So, there will be more to come. Right now, on the foundation's website, there is an opportunity to donate to the Good Neighbor Fund, and we do plan on highlighting that to an even greater extent moving forward. In the meantime, anyone would like to direct any questions or support, they can certainly do that by directing any emails to Nmelia, which is on the bottom of the slide, Nicole Melia, who is the supervisor of food service, Nmelia, M-E-L-I-A, at gvsd.org. And she will be able to navigate and get people to where they need to be to provide that support. Thank you so much, Rachel.
And if you forget the name, you can look under the food service in GVSD, correct?
Absolutely.
Listed there, so.
Thank you so much. It truly has been an amazing effort, and I know the families who have had an opportunity to receive that support have expressed such immense gratitude. And another point of pride, our technology at work. The Great Valley School District Technology Department has been hard at work to ensure that every student has a device to participate in online learning. So far, almost 600 iPads have been distributed to K through four students via the curbside service at Great Valley High School. If you remember, our one-to-one plan was to, was to provide an iPad to students in grades five through 12. When we found ourselves in a situation where students needed to be instructed virtually, once again, I have to say Ms. Candy Evans rose to the challenge. She is our supervisor of technology, and quickly responded by acquiring additional items, as well as internet support for any families who found themselves in need. In addition, the department continues to provide technology support to more than 4,000 students and our teachers and staff who are working remotely. A reminder, if you are a Great Valley School District family in need of a device, please reach out to your building principal, and also, if you have a device that is in need of technological support, please reach out to your principal. Our goal is to ensure that all students have what they need to maximize their opportunities, whether they be in school or at home.
Regina, just another opportunity to verbalize gratitude. The technology team, Candy and her team, have just done such a fantastic job of rising to unexpected challenge and making this as seamless as possible for students. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, and ditto. I mean, I personally am incredibly grateful for all of our staff who has been, who has just done an amazing job. And as we talked briefly about the virtual summer camp, while we won't be offering the in-person learning this summer, many of our summer learning experiences are now being held virtually. 14 camps are being offered in 17 different sessions, again, beginning June 22nd. The registry, registration deadlines are quickly approaching. Please visit www.gvsd.org/summerlearning for more information and to register. And you can find all of these links on our website. If you have any difficulty remembering or jotting those down as well, please feel free to reach out to myself or anyone else within the district, and we will be able to guide you to the correct place for any of the needs that you may find. Moving along, one of the areas that I just wanted to provide as an update, based upon our last meeting, there, and correspondence received since that time, there have been a number of, of conversations and questions, and possibly erroneous information that was shared regarding the Great Valley Middle School schedule. So, I just wanted to provide an update as to, number one, the rationale as to why we were looking at the schedule to begin with. So, the why in looking at the middle school schedule is to increase instructional time for students. So, when we looked, and I, I just want to clarify a possible misperception, that we are not looking to compare ourselves to other districts. That is not the intent in any way. What we are looking at is providing maximal opportunity for our students while not losing any of the opportunities that currently exist, which, as we can all imagine, that is a fine balance, but that is the challenge, and that is our goal. So, when we had shared at the last meeting that the data showed that our students were not receiving the instructional time in the core areas, it was a comparison of not only students in relation to other middle school students, but Great Valley students at the middle school in relation to Great Valley students at the elementary and high school level. So, we wanted to increase instructional time for students to be more consistent, K through 12. Another why is to maximize the support opportunities for students. So, we're not in any way looking to minimize or take away any programs or any opportunities for support. We're looking to better align the amount of instructional time, as I shared, with what students receive at the elementary and high school level, and to also be more efficient and effective with the use of staff and their talents for the benefit of students. As, as we had shared, there was, there were meetings planned, and those meetings included representatives from the middle school and student voice from the middle school to have discussions about possibilities or potential changes to the schedule. Those meetings were purely conversations to gather data for a foundation of decision-making, and no decisions were made in those meetings. It was all truly for considerations, the possible adjustments based upon the outcomes of those decisions, as you'll see on the next slide. Possible adjust, adjustments, and again, I am reinforcing the word possible. As I had shared, there have been no decisions made. These are all in the decision-making process and the discussion process. Eighth period remains, but the amount of time could be adjusted. Some feedback that we had heard from staff members who were, were part of these discussions indicated that they felt that the eighth period could be better utilized, that they felt that it was not, the benefit was not maximized, and needed to be looked at. Another possible adjustment, that advocacy could be restructured or eliminated, meaning that students could begin in first period, that locker time could be reduced, that transition between classes could be shortened, and there were also other considerations for future scheduling needs to include student voice and choice and teaming model configurations. So, again, I just wanted to share that all of these are part of the scheduling considerations moving forward. More, much more to come on this process, and we are really excited because we have had great opportunities to hear from the staff and the students related to the current scheduling configuration.
Can we, this is Rachel.
Regina.
Go ahead. Go back to timeline on this, and then my second question is, is I think some of the confusion stems from, from us as a board. In our last meeting, we, it was specifically said that nationally, I think it was, that our core subjects, we weren't getting as much instructional time, and some of the questions came back wanting to know exactly how short we were. So, this feels like a little bit of a different discussion that we're having tonight.
Oh, absolutely, and, and I can give you our average percentage at the middle school aligned to core instruction is approximately 42% to 47%. At, for example, in our other levels at the elementary and high school, we are 60% or more. So, there is much disparity between the amount of time spent, and we're just purely talking about a number of minutes spent on core instruction. And when I say core instructional areas, I'm not making a value judgment. It is those core areas that are allocated by the Department of Education, both in Pennsylvania and nationally, and those four core areas are English Language Arts, which is more at the secondary level, and reading or language arts at the elementary level. The second area is mathematics. The third area is science, and the fourth area is social studies. So, that is what constitutes core instructional areas, and when the number of minutes was, was identified, spent on those four core areas, there was less instructional time, again, between 42% and 47% of time at the middle school compared to 60% or more at the elementary and secondary, and high school level. So, as you can, as I had shared in our last meeting, the goal is to maximize and lessen, decrease that disparity across levels, and the way to do that is to reallocate time to increase core instructional opportunities for students. As far as timeline is concerned, again, anytime we are making adjustments, we have to ask ourselves, what are the implications of this decision? And much of the conversation, in fact, those, the professional staff that were involved in those meetings- in those meetings, the process was to identify possible considerations and then ask what would be the pros and cons of implementing that change. One of the changes, one of the considerations was the elimination of eighth period. And there was discussion, extensive discussion around what would be the pros or the positive outcomes of that consideration? And then what would be the implications or cons of implementing that? So, in order to make the change, what would have to happen is anything that would have previously taken place in those minutes, whether we're talking about eighth period or advocacy or locker time or transition, shortening transitions or a change in model configurations, we'd have to ask ourselves, what are the implications of that decision? And how can we strategically mitigate any negatives to students? So, when we're looking at timeline, what we would be considering, depending upon the outcome decision, we would possibly do a phase-in, which we've done at other levels. We've made slight changes over time as we can find opportunities to mitigate the negatives, the potential shortfall. And that is, that's why it's an ongoing consideration. One of the reasons we're having this discussion is because there were some, there was some erroneous information shared prematurely based upon conversations rather than decisions. And it made it necessary then for us to, to address concerns that people had in the decision-making process. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but prior to any consideration or any decision being made, certainly, we would, you have to first mitigate any kind of changes for student experience. And we just, quite frankly, are not at that point because the decision has not been made.
Regina, this is Samantha. Thank you for that explanation. I understand that erroneous information came out and maybe earlier before a decision was reached already, presented. You mentioned there was input from administration and from teachers. And I believe you said from students as to what the, you know, what the final recommendation might be. Because parents did receive that information and in spite of the fact, it seems like it would be a rather, some of these things could be a rather big change to the schedule. Will there be a way to consult and inform parents along the way? Or at least to present regularly so that people have the opportunity to provide input? You know, they were surprised, and so they provided a lot of input. But many of the comments we've received have been really meaningful. People feel very deeply for different reasons about different, you know, items that are in the schedule today. And I, from my point of view, it would be very important to find some means of continuing to inform and having a feedback loop before we make any final decision. And the board included in that loop.
Absolutely. One of the, one of the areas that you'll be voting on next week is Qualtrics. So, it's an opportunity to triangulate survey data, which we've, as I'm sure some folks have shared that there may be survey fatigue. But quite honestly, unless we survey multiple stakeholders and multiple different pockets of stakeholders, it's really difficult to get the pulse of our community. So, Qualtrics will allow us not only to survey, as many are aware, we've used SurveyMonkey in the past, and then we've used Truth or Homegrown kinds of surveys for calendar, et cetera. But we will be using Qualtrics moving forward to allow us to take multiple sources of data and triangulate that through survey form. So, that will definitely be on the horizon moving forward. And this will be a topic that will be included in that. Quite honestly, we're premature in having this discussion right now. But here we are, and we will move forward proactively and accordingly.
Thank you, because it's obvious from all the comments that the families and the community really do care very deeply. So, I want to make sure we take that into.
Absolutely. And I just want to reinforce the fact that there was never any intention to minimize or any lack of appreciation for our amazing programs, most especially our arts programs. And I think over time, the facts speak for themselves in our commitment to children and the programs that we offer. So, I was quite frankly deeply saddened by the fact that in a time when there was anxiety and stress, that this was added to the plates of our, of our parents and children. And we will work very hard to ensure that voices are heard and actions are taken seriously. This information was shared as decisions rather than conversation. And it was an unfortunate outcome for our families.
Yeah, there, this is Dave. The other comments we've received, a lot of emails on, is the concern over IEPs, gifted IEPs, I guess, five and fours, et cetera, that are, a lot of that, I shouldn't say work, but teaching and learning for those are done during the eighth period. I know that part of the discussions that were being had is also ensuring that those were, that all those obligations were maintained, no matter what the outcome is of any changes that are made, right? By no means was meant to eliminate or shrink or do any of that for those types of programs.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And the reality is, that is a binding requirement that is not only required, but also the right thing to do for children. And none of the, none of our decisions would ever be counter to our goal of doing what's what's right for the children.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that message was loud and clear, because I know we did receive a lot of emails with a lot of concerns around all of those programs. So, in addition to music and clubs and numerous other things, but just want to make sure that those were covered also.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Regina and Dave, can I ask a question about process and timeline on this? Just because there has been a lot of angst and, you know, in a time when we're all feeling that anxiety, so it is a shame that this has come up and has been so anxiety-producing for many. But can we talk just a little bit about these possible adjustments? So, is the process, what's the process going to be moving forward? And going back to Rachel, what's the timeline? And if you don't know what the timeline is, that's fine. I just want to try to get more of a sense of, okay, here's the process we're going to follow, you know, whatever that may be, and here's the timeline we're proposing.
So, what the timeline has been, we started this discussion. And if you remember, we started schedule, looking, taking a deep dive, looking at our schedule, and it started at the elementary school. That work took place over two and a half years. Moving into the middle school, which that work started with team meetings starting in January. So, there was a lot of pre-work done in sharing the work that we're doing administratively and as a system relates to AROI or Academic Return on Investment. So, looking at, starting with the end in mind, identifying why we're doing what we're doing and how will we know if what we're doing is successful? So, in using that framework, we then moved to the middle school. And in looking at the schedule at the middle school, there was, as I had shared, a significant disproportionate time spent on instruction in the core areas compared to our elementary and high school students. So, the goal then became to increase instruction for all students at the middle school in grades six, seven, and eight. So, realizing that was the goal, it's, we started with having meetings with the staff and meetings that identified representatives from each of the grade levels in special areas. So, my understanding is, I was not involved in those meetings. It was, they were led by the administrative staff with help from, with representatives from each grade level and each representatives from special areas. So, my understanding is there were 25 staff members from the middle school that were part of small group meetings, focus groups, where information was gathered to say what is working currently and what are the areas that need to be changed. It was in those discussions from the staff members, shared with, in those small group focus, in those small focus groups, that eighth period was a concern, that the feeling overall was that time was not used as efficiently and effectively as it could be for all middle school students. So, that is the basis or the root as to why eighth period was a point of discussion at all. The plan moving forward was to look at the areas that were brought up by the staff as areas of potential change and then have discussions, which that meeting, I believe, was held, I want to say it was March 26th or 27th. That was the meeting right before 23rd and 24th, it may have been. That was the focus group that precipitated a lot of discussion. The reality is, the group has been, the middle school has been a part of this process and varying degrees of involvement since January. The plan was to bring a guiding coalition together, which was a representative team from the middle school to guide the decision. That team then would look at the pros and cons. And depending upon what the outcome decisions would be, if it's a minor adjustment where we're shaving off time between passing of classes, of transitions, and utilizing opportunities such as team time or time at the end of the day or time in the morning, then those changes could be, would have been gradually implemented at the beginning of next school year. The larger the change, the more time is needed or the more runway is needed to communicate those changes and prepare students. Quite honestly, with the events beginning in March, on March 13, much of the timing and the planning has been difficult. Meeting with groups of folks virtually is, presents different challenges than meeting with people in an ongoing way, live. So, that reality has slowed the process, but the process will continue because we have a responsibility to the students of Great Valley Middle School to make sure they're receiving adequate instructional time in the core areas. So, as far as timeline is concerned, I'm sharing that this is a premature conversation because it depends upon the consideration that is to be implemented or the iterative changes that will be implemented. So, for example, if we're reducing time between classes, and that's a two or three minute, that may be implemented as soon as we come back into, into our schools. If we're talking about major adjustments or major changes, that may not be implemented until the 2020 or 21, 22 school year. So, it all depends on the implications of the change and the level of, of adjustments that would need to be made. I'm not sure if that's making sense, but that's, that's where we are now. We're looking to move toward increased instructional time. And the time that it will take to get there is dependent upon the degree of change required.
Regina, this is Neha. Could we also just clarify that this entire process is not happening in a reactionary manner, but that it's part of a larger prescribed process that's been ongoing in all facets of the curriculum across the board? Is that correct?
Absolutely. This has been a four-and-a-half-year plan. If you look back to our district goals, we have been committed to having consistency in curriculum instruction from kindergarten through 12th grade, and all work is to that end. And the, the process is, has been implemented in a very strategic way. And that is why, as we come to decision-making points, we are, we want to be incredibly proactive and not make decisions and implement decisions without going through the process of thinking about the implications of each decision.
Thank you.
I, I wish I could be more definitive with timelines and decisions, but I can't stress enough that the decisions are just not be, not made. So, the decision will dictate the timeline. But I can guarantee you that all, all intention is to maximize benefit to students and in no way negatively impact programming.
But I think also, when, when decisions are forming, then a communication will be sent out because, you know, potentially, this could be happening over the summer to some degree, that the communication will be sent out to parents, community, board members or whatever to keep them in the loop, right? I mean.
Oh, absolutely. Now, if it's a minor adjustment.
Yeah, we don't want kids walking to school in August, and there's been changes made. So, that's not the intent. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Moving forward to another very, to another moving target, the, as we're looking about on opening day of 2020 and what school opening will look like when we return, Great Valley joined other Chester County school districts in the COVID-19 school summit. And that was held in the middle of May. The purpose of the summit was to discuss possible scenarios for the fall and the impact of those scenarios on the opening of school. And the way the summit was, was organized, there were focus groups based upon Java likes. So, individuals were able to identify which focus area they would like to join or which team they would like to join. And then there were a series of questions, concerns, and possible approaches. The, each of the focus areas had notes that were taken, and those were shared with all participants. And that information is going to be used to review possible scenarios for Great Valley. And we will have a presentation next Monday to identify possible scenarios. We had the benefit in Chester County of having Jean Casner, who is the executive director at the Department of Health in Chester County, join our meetings multiple times. And she's been incredibly responsive as we've asked questions and reached out with, as issues arise in the district. And we are using many of the resources that have been provided. As she had shared with us, it is, things are changing very rapidly. So, approximately a month ago, when it was shared that the state reopening color or classification would dictate our actions, meaning if we were in red, there would be scenarios under that distinction. If we were in yellow, as a state or a county, certain scenarios aligned to that distinction. And then finally, if we're green, certain distinctions aligned to that classification. In our conversations and in resources that we're receiving, the distinctions are not as clear-cut as they may have been presented previously. Meaning, what does it mean if we are in Chester County designated green? It may not mean we're back to normal. It may mean there are continued restrictions. So, we have asked for and have been told that we will be receiving more information as that's related. The great news is, we are all in this together, and we are really working together, not only in Chester County, but across the Commonwealth to do what is in the best interest of, of our, our children and their families. We will be sending out a survey to parents as it relates to the reopening of school, asking such questions of what are some concerns and supports that you anticipate needing and including intention for next year so that we can make plans. Many school districts have come out and established some plans that they may be implementing for next school. Many school districts have come out and established some plans that they may be implementing for next school year. And we are really trying to be thoughtful and reserved in coming out, identifying potential plans in a vacuum or a void of information and decisions. So next year, next week, we will be presenting those scenarios as well as a decision-making points along the way so that parents and families can be well informed as we make decisions throughout June and the summer. Moving on, our upcoming events. June 3rd is the high school baccalaureate at 7:00 PM. And a huge thank you to many of our senior parents who have worked with our seniors in creating a memorable experience for the class of 2020, as far as their baccalariates concerned. June 5th, we were, we'll have our high school virtual graduation that will begin at 6:30. The virtual graduation decision was a result of conversations that Dr. Capitola led with a group of students, followed up with conversations with parents. And the goal is to, the goal of the students was to hold on to those things that were a very much Great Valley tradition as much as is possible to capture those in the virtual graduation with the intent of having a, an opportunity for students to come together as soon as it is safe and possible to do so. June 8th, we have our school board meeting at 7:30. And June 10th is the last student day for Great Valley School District, students kindergarten through grade 11. So thank you so much for allowing the luxury of a very long superintendent's update, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you. All right. Nothing other facilities, transportation or food service, moving on to finance.
Thank you, President Barrett. Item 10.01 is the annual recommendation to authorize the superintendent and director of business affairs to award bids, contracts, pay bills and file additional tax appeals if necessary. And that would come with ratification from the board at the August 17th board meeting. Item 10.02 is the CCIU marketplace agreement. You mentioned that we previously approved the IU budget. This is always an annual second phase where we approve their marketplace agreement. And the marketplace agreement is what I would call a smorgasbord of programs that we get to pick from. So we don't have to pay for those in advance. Like other programs, we pay for them as needed. So we're able to add programs, delete programs, add students, take students out at will and only pay for what we need. Item 10.03 is a recommendation for a photography contract with Emily Stahl Photography to take pictures of graduates and their families. She'll be at the high school on June 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 25th, 29th and 30th. And they'll take pictures of the seniors and their immediate families. And the maximum cost on that would be $4,500. 10.04, we're pleased to get a donation from the Read to Dream Foundation. And they're making a donation to the GVSD's Foods Food Program, Helping Families in Need. We sure appreciate that. Item 10.05 is our annual insurance renewals. The district uses Willis Towers Watson Northeast as our brokers. And they secured quotes for the annual insurance policies. They got quotes from Utica, CM Regent, Chubase and AIG. And we are recommending for the package policy, general liability for the foundation, the school board legal, the cyber liability. We'll recommend, we have the incumbents and the recommended awards and the costs on each of those listed. And the summary is that the existing premium for this year was 279,000. And we're happy to get a little bit of a break on that. It's coming in at 269.46 and that's a savings of $18,139. Earlier tonight, a couple of you made great comments about Candy Evans and I'll make another one. She has made this recommendation for ransomware disaster backup services. And she does a very good job of protecting our systems. But you can never be too careful and you never know when somebody's going to figure out how to break into the system. So this program is being offered by Chess Connect, which I think is operated by CCIU. And it's a cost of $13,000 per year, but we'll be able to back up our entire back database, Skyward database, which will make sure that our student records and all of our financial records are safe. So in the event that we do have ransomware, that I understand sometimes the ransom's a million dollars. I, I don't know what the ranges are, but it's commonplace now to have to pay to get your data back. In theory, this should work in that we would be able to restore everything from the backup at Chess Connect and we wouldn't have to pay a ransom. Item 10.07 is the annual request to do budget transfers from areas that have extra funds to areas that are running short on funds. And that gets refined as the audit goes on. Items 1008 is the contract with SOS. S stands for School Operations Services Group. And that's one of the businesses, one of about five, that we use to buy contracted employee services. This particular service, we, we purchase contracted custodians, instructional aides and clerical aides. So we have that annual renewal here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Speaker Palabinski.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. 10.09 is a renewal of our nursing professional services contract, recommending the renewal of Chad's Ford Alternak, Alternak Care. That was formerly Criticare. What this services, the services here are for nursing professional services for supplemental staffing and teachers' aides as would be needed. And all the fees related to those services are provided. 10.10 is another renewal of nursing professional services. This renewal is for Justicor Company per the terms of the signed agreement. The agreement would be from July 1, 2020 through June, June 20th, June 30th, 2021. And again, the charges are listed below in your, in the public content. The services are provided in as needed basis as well as maybe provided to non-public schools. Villa Maria Lower School, Villa Maria Upper School and St. Patrick's School. 10.11 is the contract renewal with Qualtrics. And as I mentioned previously, Qualtrics is a web-based survey tool. It not only provides the tool to conduct the surveys, but it also allows us to triangulate information and data, and data collection with custom service support. It includes unlimited users and responses, also providing the translation services. As we transition to Qualtrics, we'll phase out the other survey tool we use, which happens to be Survey Monkey. And Qualtrics will be our primary mechanism for gathering feedback. 10.12 is an educational services contract with Valley Forge Educational Services for a student. 10.13, that is an educational placement contract with Melmark. The contract is for two students for extended school year services as well as school year 2021. 10.14 is the contract for speech and language services for extended school year. So we contract with speech pathology consultants to provide those services to students for extended school year through 2020 as well as school year services for 2021. That is when we have services that we are not able to fill with our existing staff. Item 10.15, Center for Responsive Schools. If you remember, we had the presentation by Dr. Wexler on Center for Responsive Schools. And this is the contract and the administration is recommending the consultation, consultation and training. And that is at a cost of $42,000 to begin implementation starting this summer. The renewal of professional learning management. This is our frontline technologies group contract or agreement from July 1 through June 30 in the amount of $13,699.46. These are the services we use for a professional learning management system, the employee evaluation management, as well as the internal employees and hiring. And that information is provided. And then, Mr. Barrett, there are no additional information items.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other committee reports I missed? Any other board comments so far? All right, the draft agenda there, excuse me, is there for Google of personnel changes for next week? At this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Blake again for any comments we may receive at the communications@gvsd.org email.
We have, we have a few, Mr. Barrett. The first is from Jenny Ruddy in East Whiteland Township. In advance of tonight's meeting, I'm writing to request that you publicly address the status regarding middle school scheduling. As the parent of a rising sixth grader with an IEP, I'm hoping he'll have eighth period to do homework and receive the support he desperately needs. As it is, homework at the elementary level has been extremely challenging for our son with ADHD. After spending a full day focused, I can only imagine it will get harder. Through all the discussion with his support team, I have been told how important and helpful this block will be for him. Please let me know the plan and for what it's worth, my hope is that eighth period remains. And she, she has a follow-up question to that that she sent subsequently that said, what exactly happens in advocacy? If you could provide some information about that, it would be helpful.
Maureen Leo Erdl from 23 Andrews Road. Thank you for your work and dedication to our community. My concern is related to increasing the core instruction time and reducing eliminating eighth period at Great Valley Middle School. The historically allocated eighth period time is essential to our youth. This time allows for development and practices self advocacy skills, time management, and allows for students to prioritize and organize materials and assignments. These executive skills are essential to success. Additionally, the current eighth period supports well-rounded youth. Our students are extremely involved in extracurricular activities, allowing them to have a depth and breadth of experiences. Without allocated time and support to access school-based resources, many students will not have the necessary support structure to meet with success. Our teachers are doing an exceptional job of educating our children and meeting our expectations with typically developing students as well as those needing additional supports. Please do not conform. Our system is working for our youth and our families. The next comment is from Matthew White, 1109 Charlestown Green in Malvern. I would like to register the following public comment for the June 1st meeting. I ask that the board direct the administration to address racial bias and injustice as part of the K-12 curriculum. We have seen high-profile killings of three African-American citizens, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor and most recently These events have exposed painful realities about race and inequality in our country and the raw emotion and reaction that these conditions have evoked. It is important for everyone to clearly and unequivocally express outright condemnation of racism and other forms of intolerance. It is up to us to mold our children into beacons of acceptance, respect, inclusion and understanding. The next comment is from Christina Hartley through 05 Sidley Road. I wanted to express my disapproval for any changes to the Great Valley Middle School eighth period music program and urge you to be transparent and have meaningful discussions with the community and those directly affected by such decisions. Your Great Valley Middle School and elementary families. During the last school board meeting, I listened to Mr. Barrett wrongly labeling the eighth period as a time to do homework, which the students can do at home. Mr. Barrett could not sound farther from our reality. Perhaps discussing with actual current students and families would help him and others on the board who are supposed to represent us understand that eighth period is so much more than homework. Eighth period is crucial for those students who need extra help. They can visit teachers and counselors and younger grades can be tutored by eighth grade, national junior to band, orchestra, participate in NJHS and student council and a plethora of other clubs. Yes, some students may have hall study more than twice a week, thus they complete their homework in eighth period. And there's nothing wrong with that. Some students may go home to a family that cannot help them with a variety of subjects and they get that help at school without missing out on other subjects, classes, periods. Some students participate in extracurricular activities such as pursuing a musical instrument, voice or competitive sports and other venues than the school. When I hear statements such as the one made during the last board meeting, I am disappointed to say the least. Thanks for your time. The next comment is from Matthew White, 1109 Charlestown Green. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a duplicate of one that I already read. The last one is from Alexander Nika, Seven Veterans Way. I ask that the board confirm as official board policy the assurance made by President Barrett in personal correspondence regarding public comment on the middle school master schedule before any final decisions are made. To wit, once the foundation of work is complete and the potential scenarios show promise of becoming reality, information be, will be brought to the board in a public forum. It would be then that the board and the public would be invited to provide feedback and input to the district leadership team. I sincerely appreciate this assurance, but since it was made in personal correspondence and differs from the public comments at previous school board meetings, I seek confirmation that this is the official board policy. That is the end of the public comment.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other board comments? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Thank you for participating.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you, board members.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dave.